Check, check. All right, so I do have a time of 9:00 a.m. I would like to call the meeting to order. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Can we get verification of legal notices?
Notices have been sent out and verified.
Okay, thank you. We have some consent agenda or an item of consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt Item 4A, Approval of the February 9, 2023 Planning Commission Minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and we will enter into public input time, which is the time for any person to speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future hearing. Speakers are requested to legibly write your name on the sign-in sheet at the podium and state your name for the record. So if anybody wishes to speak on any subject that's not in today's agenda, you may do so. And seeing as there... All right, can we check the Zoom room? See if there's anybody on there that would like to speak?
There's no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, so our first item is timed for 9:05, which is four minutes. So just hang out for a little bit.
You're a much faster typer than I am. Flying fingers.
It's a...
It is 9:05 for our first item, a consideration of proposed major use permit UP 19-37 and mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 19-57 for 42,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy. The applicant is 26936 Jerusalem Grade, Travis Lizinby. Project location, 26936 Jerusalem Grade, Middletown, APNs 012-017-69.
Melissa will be presenting on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Melissa Fausto, and I will be presenting for Travis Lizinby. This is major use permit 19-37 for Travis Lizinby, located at 36936 Jerusalem Grade in Middletown. The applicant is requesting one A Type 3 medium outdoor cultivation license and one Type 13 self-distribution license. The project proposes 42,500 square feet of outdoor canopy area, and the project parcel is 39.14 acres. The base zoning is rural land with a waterway combining district. The general plan designation is rural land resource conservation. The project parcel is located in the Middletown planning area and parcels within the vicinity are zone rural lands and open space. The project parcel contains one Class 2 water course and two Class 3 water courses. The project site meets the required setbacks found in Article 27.11. The project parcel is approximately 8.20 miles west of Highway 29 and approximately 5.7 miles east of the Coyote Valley growth boundary and will be accessed from Jerusalem Grade. The project proposes one 120-square-foot security center. The site was developed under early activation, which was approved on May 4, 2021. The site improvements included one security fencing, security pots, garden beds, irrigation systems, and one 120-square-foot side agriculture shed. The site contains one 2,380-foot square foot residence, one garage, and 3,000-gallon water storage tanks. The project will utilize two existing onsite groundwater wells, which have an estimated yield of 3.5 gallons per minute. The average yearly water use required is 1.95 acre-feet or 636,000 gallons per year. The project was reviewed for compliance with the Lake County General Plan, Middletown Area Plan, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and State Regulations. The rural land general plan designation was reviewed, and there is no conflicting policies in the general plan. We identified 3.2.1A from the Middletown Area Plan policies that apply to the project, which pertains to groundwater monitoring. The irrigation water lines will have inline meters compliant with the California Code of Regulations Title 23, Division 2, Chapter 2.7. And water level meters will be equippeded with data logging capabilities will be installed to the existing wells for monitoring and reporting. And the project will not burn vegetative waste and will instead utilize bins with secure fitting lids. Article 7, Article 27, and Article 37 were all analyzed as part of the zoning ordinance analysis. As mentioned before, the project parcel is in the waterway combining district. The project is compliant with the waterway combining district. Structures exceed the required setbacks for the water course. The SECO initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts but are reduced to less than significant to the following 10 resources. The initial study comment period was from October 28 to November 28, 2022. All identified impacts to resources can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. Mitigations are outlined in attachment to proposed conditions of approval and attachment for initial study. The cumulative impacts of the cultivation operation in combination with other projects in the area were analyzed as less than significant. The proposed project would not contribute to any significant cumulative impacts which may occur in the area in the foreseeable future. And as part of the SECO analysis, the initial study includes analysis of the requirement from the Department of Cannabis Control for cannabis business license. The project has been planned and designed to avoid significant impacts as discussed in the SECO analysis of the ISM and D. Mitigation measures identified in each section would reduce indirect and direct effects on human beings and impacts to less than significant levels. Saff recommends to adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study 19-57 and approve use permit 19-37 with the findings and conditions of approval. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Saff is available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the presentation?
Regarding the presentation, I like those maps that show the pending and approved grows. That puts it in a much easier context for me to understand.
I agree, and I'd love to see those ahead of time.
Do we have... Is the applicant present? Is there anything that you would like to say about your project?
Yeah, so my name's Travis Lizinby. I was born and raised here in Lake County, grew up up on Cobb. I raise five kids here in the county. Hope that you guys approve my project.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to answer a couple of questions? Your water consumption expectations suggest you're planning for about 756 plants. I'm basing that on the six gallons per day. That's a spacing of about seven by eight. Have I got that right, or are you...
What's in place is the pots are three feet apart, five-foot aisles, and there's like 850 pots.
Okay, so you're going to need more water than that.
Well, I grew there on the early activation, and the water that I had was enough.
Yeah, it looks like you have enough. I think I crunched out 11,500 gallons per day. Do you keep track of your water consumption?
Yeah, we got meters on the wells. And when I was out there, you know, towards the end of the year, we were using 10,000 every three days.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I will be opening a public comment now, so you're good. I just want to just put it for the record that public comment is open.
Thank you. My name is Trey Sherrill. I was the consultant that helped prepare the application. I just wanted to make myself available if there are any questions about the application or the proposed project.
Sure, so the question that was brought up right now regarding the water usage, those numbers are based off the early activation. Is that correct?
Sort of. They're based off of a report that was done by... They're based on a range of things because different cultivation practices, different planting dates, things like that. So in this case, I believe it was 25 inches of water, you know, 2.1 acre-feet per acre. Basically, it's based on that. I find that to be a good standard when estimating the amount of water that a outdoor farm would use. There were different cultivation practices that would use more or less depending on what they're doing. So I do my best to come up with the estimate as best as I can.
Yeah, so I guess my question was if early activation was granted, does that water usage reflect this water usage that was on the report?
I'd have to verify that, and I can do that if you give me a couple of minutes.
Sure, if the applicant would like to answer that question or just confirm that that is correct. Because I do know that you guys are having greenhouses as well, or was that part of the project, no, was it? Okay.
To me, if I can kind of jump in here, I see one big issue, and that is that they're in pots, and that's going to reduce your consumption quite a bit. There's also the issue of soil types, things like that. It's really hard to estimate.
Yeah, I agree, and that's pots do generally use more water than in-ground cultivation. And therefore, so we use a different calculation to estimate water usage for in-ground cultivation versus above-ground cultivation.
Yeah, because if the number is, you know, close to it, similar to what the report is, then what your previous use was during early activation, then I'd be okay with that. But if it's going to be, you know, twice as much more or anything, that's just the main concern that I have regarding the water usage. And also, yeah, basically, that was the question.
Yeah, I didn't see in the hydrology report any other wells that were identified close to the property. Usually, those analyses do take a look at the neighboring wells.
It's mostly surrounded by BLM property, vacant, no wells on it. There is a... The closest inhabited property is another licensed cannabis farm that uses, I think, well water and some stored water within ponds.
Is that project outdoors as well, Trey?
It was originally permitted as outdoors. I was actually in here about a year ago when they got approved for greenhouse. They converted it to greenhouse cultivation.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult time finding the monitoring reports for water usage, but...
There is a section in the hydrology report potential impacts to streams and neighboring wells.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about it because you have enough water, and we're talking 11,000 gallons a day. About three times what he's... So I'm not too concerned about it. There's not a lot of neighbors.
And then just another thing. So this is an off-the-grid property, so solar panels are used and solar pumps, which are... They kind of sip water from the well. Basically, I like to say sipping. So it doesn't depress the groundwater table. It just kind of slowly takes off of it. Whenever the sun's out, the pump's running, and the sun goes down, the pump stops, kind of thing.
I would observe, too. We also often hear from the public that these are the kinds of locations they prefer grows to be. Remote areas, not affecting viewscapes, things like that. And so that certainly fits that category.
Yeah, and this does adhere, there are no trails, official trails or anything like that within 1,000 feet. It does adhere to that setback as well for open space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark McDonald. I own Inland Properties, which is a large land brokerage specializing mostly in Lake County. And I've known Travis for many years, sold him his first property, and have sold some other properties to him since then. And I know him to be a diligent and hard-working guy that's very, very civically minded. As far as the water issue goes, of course, I sell lots and lots of properties out in Jerusalem Grade, so I know that really well. And the nearest property is about a half a mile away, and that's the permitted property that's now converted to greenhouses. And then the only other property is BLM. And then beside that is a 2,200-acre Paradise Ranch, which is, I think, currently for sale, but not... I think there are some wells there, but nobody is using those wells. And hopefully, this year, we finally got some rain, so hopefully that will help us with all of our water issues. But yeah, I highly recommend this project. I'm personally familiar with this project. I've worked on it with him for a while, and I know he's to be very diligent and will always do the right thing, so that's what I have. Okay?
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this project? If not, can we check the Zoom room just to see if there's any hands up in there?
There are no hands up in the Zoom room.
Okay. If there's nothing, I will be closing public comment and bringing it back to the commission for questions or comments.
I'm prepared to offer a motion, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant as shown in the initial study IS 19-57 submitted by Travis Lizinby for the property located at 26936 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and further described in this motion will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the Planning Commission adopt initial study IS 19-57 with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 23, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I further move that the Planning Commission grant the major use permit UP 19-37, applied for by Travis Lizinby on property located at 26936 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, California, and further described in this motion based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated February 23, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And motion passes. The applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. or before the seventh day following the Planning Commission's decision on this matter. Thank you. And moving on to our second item. If your item is done, just... Whenever you guys are ready, or if you guys want to stick around, just do so quietly when you guys exit the room and continue discussion outside. So our second item is our consideration of proposed major use permit UP 21-29 and mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 21-30. Applicant is Adobe Creek LLC, 2CW Productions, Inc., Highmark Land Company LLC for commercial cannabis processing in existing facilities. The project location is 4820 Loosa Road in Kelseyville, APN 008-038-50.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Byron, if you would hold just one second. I'm not sure I need to disclose this, but about three years ago, I toured this property with a consultant who thought it might be an interesting conversion from pears to processing weed. But there was no application before us at the time, but I did want to disclose that I have walked through that property.
I as well have toured the property back in 2020, I believe. Haven't been there since, so...
Well, since we're all disclosing, I toured it more recently. The shed was built by my relatives in 1923, I believe, so there's that.
Floor is yours, Byron.
Thank you. So as stated, this is the Adobe Creek facility use permit 21-29. It's at 4820 Loosa Road in Kelseyville. I want to point out that the applicant is 2CW Productions. The staff report lists an old applicant, so I wanted to make that clear. This is for cannabis processing, the vacant Adobe Creek Packing Shed. This is not processing like the Type 6 or Type 7 processing that you sometimes see. That requires a specific process. This is processing that includes bucking, drying, storing of cannabis. And I know the applicant and consultant will be describing further the day-to-day operations of the site, but it's not the extraction or machinery that you sometimes see with the processing permits. The base zoning is agricultural, and the general plan is industrial. If you looked at the GIS, you might have... There's some conflicts in the county GIS. If you clicked on the property, it would have identified it as agricultural general plan, but we went back and checked the paper maps. It is indeed industrial for the general plan, although still zoned agriculture. It is in the Kelseyville planning area. And the vicinity map, you can see, wow, it's just north of Kelseyville. I want to clarify the surrounding uses. There's vineyard to the immediate east. Kelsey Creek is to the west. South of the facility is abutted by vineyard, but then there is also residential, a church, and industrial uses across from Merritt Road. And then to the north, it's largely vacant and more vineyard.
If I can just interrupt while you're on this slide. Merritt Road ends at the creek, right there where your thing is. So it's actually not Merritt Road to the south, it's Gaddy. I know it's probably not important, but...
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. Gaddy runs from here to here. So the site includes 44,000-square-foot drying and office building. This building, one, a 23,000-square-foot processing, packaging, harvest, and storage building, and 25,000-square-foot cold storage building. As you can see, there's still remnants of the pear processing on the site. Additional buildings on the site, another 24,000-square-foot drying building, 1,000-square-foot maintenance building, a security building that's around 2,000 square feet. And there are proposed 10 320-square-foot frozen harvest storage areas. As you can see, again, the site is currently vacant. The project will use existing parking, use existing electrical systems, and there'll be a new fence around the property. Project analysis, we reviewed the... As usual, we read the general plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, the zoning ordinance, state regulations, as well as the sensitive receptors. I'll get into that a little later. Usually, at this point, you hear that we... There's no conflicting policies within the general plan. However, in this case, we do have policies in the general plan that do support this use. This is an ag-related use. It's an ag processing facility, which increases the overall... The supporting policies are agricultural economic zones, where the county shall encourage development of ag-supporting industry such as ag processing facilities that add to the overall agricultural viability of the county. This certainly falls under that category. This is an agriculture-related support industry. It supports ag-related uses. The use provides a needed service to surrounding agricultural areas. The operational physical characteristics is designed to not have a detrimental impact on water resources. And again, this activity supports ag operations, production, and processing within the county. Additionally, the Kelseyville Area Plan has policies that apply to this property, appropriate visual screening, a high priority to employment opportunities, and new commercial uses having its own security. There's other factors to consider with this project that are planning-related, such as the vertical integration of the ag industries, the job creation aspect of this project, the adaptive reuse. We're reusing vacant facilities for a new use. The greenhouse gas reduction that will occur with this, where we're no longer trucking the product out of the county for processing. It'll be processed within the county. It also discourages what we call attractive nuisance, where it's a vacant property, it's prone to dumping, it's prone to... You know, it's vacant and not washed right now. It'll be more taken care of with active people on site and security. We did measure, I brought this up before, measure from the project site. We measured from the most northernmost... from the most northernmost building, which is actually not being used for this project. It is over 1,000 feet linear from the church. It is, excuse me. Sorry about that. It is 1,200, 1,200 feet literally from the American Legion and the ball field there. It is almost 4,000 feet from the high school, from the field, and then 2,000 feet from the gym where they have elementary school activities and basketball there. So it does meet all the required setbacks. This was circulated as a mega negative declaration. It was circulated from October 28th to November 28th, 2022. There are mitigation measures that are outlined in the proposed conditions of approval and the initial study. It is staff's recommendation that the commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration for, which is the result of initial study 21-30, and approve the major use permit, use permit 21-29 with conditions of approval. I'm here for any questions. The applicant is also here, and I believe the applicant has a presentation as well.
I have just one quick question for staff. Item 22 on the draft conditions mentions a cultivation tax. Will cultivation be occurring on this property?
Cultivation will not be occurring on this property.
I don't have any questions or comments until we maybe hear from the applicant.
And, oh, there they are.
I'm going to first apologize. I have a health issue going on with my boys. My name is Catherine Clark. This project works for this, the needs of this county. You have a lot of cultivation, very little ability to process. I'd like to give you some background. Ned Fussell is 50% partner in a cannabis campus I developed for them in Santa Rosa. We are the largest in the state, I think the largest in the United States currently. We took vacant buildings. We actually have cultivation, processing, manufacturing, and distribution, about 200,000 square feet. We abut residential. They think we're the best thing that ever happened to them. We changed the neighborhood. We have security. They had the same things that went on here, dumping, you know, people doing wheelies in parking lots, you know, young kids coming to drink and those kinds of things. We cleared all of that up. That campus is the largest taxpayer in the city of Santa Rosa. The police love us. We have had three issues in six years. My security has them zip tied to a chair when the police arrive to pick them up. We know how to do it. We know how to do it right. The only loss we've ever had is cutting of our fence. Our cameras pick it up. We pick them up. We zip time to share. We call the police, solve that issue. We know how to do it well. We know how to be an asset to the community. I've asked and people just couldn't make the time, but given is available for you to see what it's like. We can fit into a community and be a good neighbor. Any other questions for me? I know Trey has a presentation, but I am firsthand with Ned and I have done these processes, you know, these projects that are this large, and I know how to do them and how to do them right. Any questions?
I believe we don't have any questions, but thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good morning. My name is Trey Sherrill. I'm consulting for the applicant 2CW Productions. I have a presentation. I didn't realize the familiarity of most of the presentations is just photos and things to kind of make it so that you could understand the location. But this is, this is the processing facility. This is kind of a southeastern view of the facility. Luassa Road is right there in the foreground. And then the facility, there's three, three buildings with covered awning connected them, and then one building off to its side on the right. Go to the next slide, please. So these are the yellow, green, and blue are the three buildings that are connected by the awning. The brown building is the one that was to the right in that image. The brown building is the one that is closest to the community of Kelseyville and, but that's going to be the last one to be used at this point in time. It's mainly going to be the three buildings on the left, mainly that big yellow building because you can, that building can be, a truck can drive into for the purposes of loading and unloading, where odors and air can be contained in that space.
Is that green building where you made the measurements from?
No, the brown building is where the measurements come from. Next slide, please. That's just the image. That is the yellow building on the left that's in blue in this image in the parking area. And then we, you know, we are aware that there are concerns about the proximity of this facility to the community and sensitive uses within the community. So in this, in this slide, you can see the property that it's owned by the Kelseyville Unified School District. The building off, the green building here off by itself, that was the brown building in the previous site. So that's the one off by itself. The larger block is the three, the three buildings. The brown building is a little over 1,000 feet from the First Baptist Church, a little over 1,200 feet from the Kelseyville Unified School District property, and that is the location of the baseball field as well as other school-related buildings. But the baseball field is the one that's closest to this property. And it's, you know, over 2,000 feet from Main Street, Kelseyville. This is a north view of the, of the property. The building in the foreground is the one all by itself, and then the, you know, the three buildings that are connected are off in the back. Just wanted to kind of give you, you can see some industrial uses in the, kind of the top left corner with some agricultural uses behind that. You'll see better on the next slide, but the agricultural uses surrounding this property with Clearlake in the background. Now, this is a, a south, kind of south-southwest view of the property, the three buildings in the foreground, some, you know, leftover equipment from pear packaging storing, storing at the property. The community of Kelseyville is beyond the vineyard and the trees that you see in the top left there. And, and then you see the industrial uses across the creek to the right. And just the vineyard will be maintained. There is no, there is no proposal to remove the vineyard at this time. And then this would be the path of travel as opposed to traveling through the community of Kelseyville. The one that makes the most sense from Highway 175 slash 29 is to come and go from the exit there. It's going to bring you back, it's going to bring you in front of Kelseyville Lumber via Merritt Road, transitioning to Gaddy, and then up Luassa Lane. And then, but in this, in this path of travel, they would not be traveling past the school property or the First Baptist Church or the, on Main Street. I think there's one more slide. Nope, that's it. Free to answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. So what is planned for the leftover boxes from the previous use? All the leftover equipment that was there?
I am not aware of any plan at this time, but I would assume that they would try to find someone to use the, Katie, do you have?
They'll be taken by the owner of the property.
The owner of the property would take them with them.
Sure. And could you just clarify, what was the, or what will be the, because you mentioned that the brown building from the previous, that one slide, that it was going to be the last to be developed or the last to be used? What did you mean by that?
So the, the primary buildings to be used would be the three. They're, they're the ones that suit, that's the best. Actually, there's a proposal that the applicant is tossing around where they would kind of set up a co-op there because it's, it's cool storage, but it's not cold storage. With that, if you remember from Byron's presentation, we were talking about 10 freezer units. These buildings get below freezing, but we need them to get below zero degrees or close to zero degrees for the purpose of long-term frozen storage. So therefore, this building, it just doesn't suit our needs as well as the other buildings do, and you can't drive into this building like you can the biggest one. And it's not covered and not connected, so it's the least desirable of the four buildings for use. And so one of the ideas is if, if a Lake County cannabis farmer, another one, not, not the applicant, doesn't want to take over that building, and they would have to operate under the rules, regulations, license of my client, if they don't want to take over that building, then we would provide it as kind of agricultural co-op because it does provide suitable cold storage, just our cool storage, just not the kind of cold storage that we would desire that for cannabis store, long-term cannabis storage.
Can I explain the technical, the technical on?
Could you say your first and last name again?
Catherine Clark.
Thank you.
The, my directions are poor. Looking at this, the left side of the building gets too much sun. So that building doesn't stay consistent in this temperature. The, as the sun goes down, it heats up that side, and we're having trouble figuring out how to mitigate that. It will be very expensive. So it will not be the building we concentrate on. All right. It will happen at a point, but there's a lot of money that has to go in that building to create consistent temperature. So that's the detail to that.
Yeah, that makes sense. So it could, it's for future development potentially for whatever the time comes to develop it or to, okay.
And then, excuse me, for the dry storage, the mobile units that you guys are talking about, will they be close to that building? Or where, on this picture, can you kind of point out where those were going to be used?
Go back to the, I believe it's the second slide you can see, it's the one with the colored building, yeah, there. So you see the blue lines?
Yeah.
That is the proposed location of the cold storage.
And that's under the awning?
And they would be under the awning.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and those, those units, you know, all the other buildings are enclosed, that's not, but those units would be enclosed in themselves, and they would be under the cover of that awning.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will be opening this up for public comment if anybody wishes to speak or ask questions. And if there's nobody here in chambers, can we take a look on Zoom?
I have several hands up in the Zoom room. I'm just going to go with the first person. So Erin McCarick, can you state your first and last name? And you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Erin McCarick, City of Clearlake and Vice President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Very excited for this project. I know many people on the, good morning, Commissioner. Many people on the commission and just in the general, in the county are just excited to see this move forward because it has been vacant for so long and numerous potential projects moving forward with it. So a big shout out to the CDD for their efforts in continuing this and also supportive of the applicant, just very active in the community and good folks. So I would like to support this project and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next one would be Richard Durham. I'm going to give you access to your microphone. You have three minutes. Thank you.
This is Richard Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. I felt important. I'm down in the Yucatan Peninsula, so high from the Yucatan. It is that this business moves forward. Approximately each acre of outdoor cannabis requires 10,000 square feet of drying and curing capacity, and that sometimes is beyond the cultivator's ability to, in their beginning years. So this would be a huge asset to cultivators in the county. And as cannabis unfolds throughout the next few years, the availability of this service is extremely important for everyone. And having it also close into the county will let people access it, workers, without causing great pollution, driving, and, you know, it's just all around seems to make a lot of sense. So I propose that you pass it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person in the Zoom room would be Sarah Bodnar.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Sarah Bodnar, Consultant. And I'm calling to speak in support of this project. I think this is a fabulous and necessary project and a great application. As Byron said, this is a compatible and, and really needed agricultural use in Lake County. It helps repurpose an old structure and bring it back to life. And as the commission is very well aware, we have a desperate need for cannabis processing space in Lake County. We currently still don't have regulations allowing on-farm drying, which is hopefully coming soon. But with, absent that, we really need commercial spaces at scale. And in addition to that, really, you know, one of the challenges we have with, with the cannabis industry and with all agriculture is that all crops come off the farm at relatively the same time. So we need multiple facilities like this, just like we needed multiple pear processing facilities. So we're, we're designing for a future that is already here, a little bit too late, but this project helps us bring, helps bring us forward. You guys are familiar with it. You know, many of you have toured the property and everybody knows of it. And the, the kind of revitalization of empty buildings and occupying these vacant structures that can happen with approval of a project, this means that it's going to be safer, that it's going to be cleaner, and that it's going to bring vitality to the neighborhood. And I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next person in the Zoom room will be Sarah Ryan.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Ryan. I'm the Environmental Director for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and I had just a couple of questions about this project. I don't have the, you know, all of the environmental documentation that went along with, you know, with the review of this project. So I apologize if, you know, the information was readily available at some point and I didn't get that, you know, I didn't avail myself of it. So my first question is, it sounds like, you know, because there's no cultivation here, but it does say that they're going to be using some wells. And I just wanted to make sure that the plan is that the wells, they'll be using less than two acre feet a year of water because I know that's a requirement with the governor that, because it's in the Big Valley groundwater basin, that if there's well usage over two acre feet a year, it needs to get approved by the GSA. So that's the first question I had.
They have a staff. We are aware that it's in the Big Valley Basin, and I've been working with the, the GSA staff on actually all projects that are within the, within the basin. And this is designed to comply with all the requirements.
Well, so is it planned, are they planning on using more than two acre feet a year? And I, yeah, so are they planning on using more than two acre feet a year?
No.
No.
Okay, okay. And then my next question is, you know, I don't know if there would be any additional requirements, but you know, Luassa is a little country road. And I'm not sure, like, if it's been evaluated, like, the amount of trucks and, and kind of vehicle. And I'm not sure like if it's been evaluated, like the amount of trucks and and kind of vehicle traffic that would be on the there for especially during the the season when a lot of, you know, activity is going on. But are there any requirements for that road to be a little bit more taken care of because of this project and these activities?
It was reviewed by the Public Works Department and I'm looking to see if any requirements are in the conditions of approval. It's just standard, standard language about general maintenance and encroachment permits. There is no improvement requirement of the road itself. Although the driveways will have to be designed in a manner that's appropriate for the use.
Okay. And then my final question is, if any ground disturbance is being planned on this, whether it's, you know, removal of asphalt or I understand fencing is going to go in. We would like the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians to be for the applicant to have to work with the tribe to providing sort of cultural monitoring support during those any ground disturbance.
As I recall, they were consulted. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I believe the agency comments did reflect consultation with the Big Valley Band.
There was it was notified to the Big Valley. It was two tribes responded. I don't believe Big Valley responded.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. And the cultural resources mitigations are the standard mitigations for cultural resources as recommended by the cultural, the study that was done. There is not a monitoring requirement.
Well, and something that jumped out at me in the staff report in terms of water was the prior amount used by the pear packing facility, 48 million gallons a year compared to 1.4 million gallons with this new application, which is a dramatic reduction in water use.
Okay, I have to jump in on this. I was involved in the pear processing facility and I'm pretty sure we use nowhere close to that amount of water. I think there's a misunderstanding. The hydrology report referred to 3,600 gallons of water per ton of fruit. There's just no way that it came anywhere close to that. And I think the misunderstanding is, and I'm recalling from 25 years ago. So I don't know any numbers, but as I recall, we recycled the water. Having said that, I'm not too concerned about it. This is clearly going to use less water than the pear operation did.
If the applicant or Trey, if you could answer some questions regarding that. Because if the existing vineyard is going to be maintained, that would require some water. Obviously, employee usage and potentially janitorial services like, you know, cleaning or maintaining the property. But it's, could you just kind of explain something like that?
Yes, Trey Sherrill for Two Three W Productions. Yes, I so this this the hydrology study was not prepared by our team, but it was prepared for this application was originally submitted by another applicant. We picked it up and took it over. That the hydrology study that was prepared for that, the original applicant, it includes a manufacturing, which would have used a little bit of water. There's, you know, we're going to be trying to get water away and out of the situation here because it's just for drying and cold storage. That being said, there are domestic water uses and irrigation for the vineyard. The hydrology study estimated for domestic, domestic, the vineyard and manufacturing that it would be about four acre feet, four to five. But and then, yes, I don't know where I don't know where they're pointing. They cited a food northwest about the, you know, that the pear facility used to use 48 to 231 million gallons. I don't know where that I didn't look that up. So I'm not sure what they're referring to. There will definitely be much less water usage. It could possibly be, it will most likely be over for the site as a whole. It will most likely be over two acre feet because of the of the vineyard. But the processing facility definitely won't use more than two, two acre feet of water. And then as traffic, it's we believe that the traffic associated with the cannabis processing facility will be much less than that of of the pear facility. And if it would definitely be lighter because of, you know, we're not carrying, we're carrying cannabis that's already been bucked and and broken down in the field through this facility versus pears that are they just weigh more and need heavier equipment to transport them to the facility. And oh, land disturbance, the only land disturbance would be would be the installation of the fence around the perimeter of the facility. There is no proposed other ground service. We're trying to just use the existing parking areas, the existing buildings, the existing facilities of the of the property.
Can you please describe that fence?
It'll be six foot tall chain link fence, very standard chain link fence.
Okay, it's not going to be one of those ugly barrier things?
It's its sole purpose is for is for security, maintaining the perimeter. It's not for obstructing the view because all activities would be occurring within the buildings anyway. So there's they obstruct the view of any cannabis activities.
Thank you.
Could we take it back to the the person that asked the question, see if all her questions were answered regarding the subject?
Yes, this is Sarah again. So I I think they have, I mean, I'm assuming that even though the vineyard is going to be in operation, it's not this permit is not associated with this. So there's no requirement to do any additional decisions for their water use and therefore it wouldn't trigger the two acre feet a year requirement for the that the governor has. Could that be confirmed?
Yeah. And there's also no new, there's no new well as well that would that would trigger anything regarding the GSA. And this was again reviewed by Water Resources Department and Public Works. So I do not believe that it breaks any threshold of of the governor's order.
And I correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we would be required to monitor water use because this is a cannabis facility as well, even though it's not cultivation.
That is, that is true. Water use will be monitored and reported.
And in terms of the other question I had regarding the ground disturbance, we do disagree with the, yeah, I looked at the cultural monitoring report produced by Jay Flaherty. And it, you know, they did a surface walkthrough and he does state in it that ground disturbance might unearth various, you know, artifacts and other things that are important to the tribe. And so even though your your standard cultural monitoring mitigation measure is to call somebody if something is found, we don't disagree. We don't agree with that as a mitigation measure because at that point it's already impacting and damaging the resource.
Could we add that as a condition of approval or would we be required to add that? Or would it be in agreement between the applicant and the tribe?
What's the request?
To have a monitor for?
It just sounds like cultural sensitivity training and all of that.
Encourage it.
Yeah.
Your commission may, if the evidence before you presented to you supports, like if in your assessment of the evidence presented to you today supports in your in your mind, the mitigation requirement of having a monitor, you could certainly require a monitor. However, what we cannot do is require a specific that an applicant as part of a condition for a permit, we cannot require that the applicant enter into a specific agreement with a third party. But if your commission does, based on the evidence presented to you today, determine that a mitigation, an appropriate mitigation in this instance would be a monitor, you can certainly require a monitor.
Sarah, we do have the applicant here that would like to say something to that question of yours.
Sure.
Catherine Clark. The property is partially fenced now. It's just old, not sufficient. So we will be putting fences back where they are currently. The vineyard has been in place a very long time. We would not have a point where we would remove asphalt. We have trucks coming in. It's just not something we would do. We're not growing at the facility. Parking is the most important thing we're going to have need for employees, for trucks. So I can't even imagine us removing any of it. That would just mean not beneficial to anything. So I would really appreciate if we do not get into having to call, you know, and pay for someone to monitor the installation of a fence where there's already one. Seems an undue burden.
Sarah, do you have a response to that question or to that comment?
You know, I'm not the tribe's historic preservation officer. Unfortunately, he's not here. And I understand what they're saying about, you know, it's a very small footprint. You know, obviously, there was no cultural review ever done for any of these older structures that were ever put in these vineyards, no cultural review ever done for that. So there's probably plenty of things, you know, in that area and we never, that's not a good reason not to have a monitor. However, if they're pulling poles out and putting them right back in the where they are, there aren't any new holes dug is what it sounds like she's saying because there's already a fence up. You know, that's probably fine. But if there's any sort of extensive that they're doing new holes that are, you know, broader and stuff, nobody has had a chance to, you know, look under those soils. That was not part of the cultural assessment done by Jay Flaherty. He just did a surface review. So, you know, it's right next to a creek that's important to the tribe. And we are expecting that things would be found subsurface if there was that type of disturbance done. You know, so it sounds like if you're if you're putting the poles right back in where they already were, that would probably be okay and we would let that go. But we, you know, yeah. Certainly, if there's anything else, I hope our TPO is able to be in touch with the, you know, with CDD if we have some other concern. In terms of approving your permit today, that's probably fine.
I do want to add, the creek is across the road from us. We won't be doing anything over there at any point. It's too close to the creek. I know that county would like to develop some of that creek and things. And we're not going to the other side of the road.
So would you agree with the with the comment that if any ground disturbance regarding fence fencing would not involve digging any more holes? But the concern that I have is that if fencing would be put in an area where, let's say currently there's no fencing or it would have to be a new post would have to be put somewhere somewhere else than where it is, that a that that would trigger cultural resources?
Where we would be putting cross fenceings for deliveries and things would be where there's already asphalt. So we're not taking up asphalt. We're just going to dig a hole because we have to be careful for metric and state laws. When plants come in, there's a whole process. Because if we're taking them and drying it for for your cannabis grow, it has to be monitored very carefully.
Yeah, I guess the concern that Sarah brought up was regarding previous requirements. For example, to put that asphalt that's already existing there, any digging that had to be done prior to the building even being there, right? So in the process of that, that if a that if there was ground disturbance, despite the fact that there's already asphalt there, that something could be in there. So that's the tribe's concern. And if Sarah, if you're still there, could you just confirm that I'm kind of making the the correct point there?
Yeah, yes. I mean, as I said, all of those structures that have been put in right next to that creek and that creek bed does, you know, it moves over the years. And so what's what's now a road right next to a creek probably was creek bed at some point. And all of those are considered sensitive areas for the tribe, for tribes. And so, yeah, I think you've stated it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to jump really quick. I think the the part of understanding the impact and not minimizing it just being a hole. If you're saying it's just a hole, how deep is that hole? And if you're going to break through old asphalt and into new soil, that's where the the kind of issue is arising. And so I think in terms of understanding exactly how deep you're going to be digging, that it's going back into previously disturbed, that's all good. But where do you break that threshold of turning over new soil? And so I think that's not, that information is not available. So you have to assume, and we don't want to assume, we want to know. You guys are saying, yeah, they're going to, it's going to go right back in the same existing place where there's not going to be a disturbance to any previously undisturbed soil. And so I think, again, understanding there's a lot of factors that play into, you know, like Sarah mentioned, it's well known that the creeks have changed over thousands of years. And that we understand that the primary habitation is around the water in the creeks historically. And so that's why I think the concern is being raised. If it's new soils, then at some point there has to be some type of mitigation or discussion with the applicant and the tribe to work that out, you know. And so without you saying we're going to actually dig in a hole that's already been disturbed three feet in the ground, those are kind of things that are, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, is the type of fence, how much, what's the depth of the fence, what's the size of the fence? Is it going to be concrete? You know, all those types of things are just little details that help out to kind of either say it's going to create a new disturbance or it's going to stay within a previously impacted area. And I think that's the part again of, you know, coming from the cultural resource field, we know that a shovel head can in untampered soil can go back far as 500 years in terms of the information and the resources. And so so when we just say a small hole, we got to think in terms of a shovel head can erase any potential history that's there. And so that's why it's critical, like you're saying, if it's going to go back in a previously disturbed, then then there's really not a need. But I think, you know, to have that conversation and provide those little minute details helps to kind of rule out some of the need for maybe potential monitoring. And I think that's kind of the what's coming out is what's going to happen with the fence? You know, it's, is it going to eventually hit that threshold where it's in new soil or not? You know, and I think that's something I feel like I'm comfortable with what I've heard so far.
And as I say, we're not getting near the creek. We know creek beds are water sources where they commonly, you know, everyone needs water. The concerns, and I'm going to be open, all right. We have the site that we developed needs monitoring on anything that's deeper than two feet. So we have to have someone out there. Our agreement, though, was it could be a third party person. We've had issues where waiting for the person they wanted to provide held up the whole project because they said, oh, we can't supply anybody for three weeks and then you can only have them one day a week. Well, that can make a fence installation take six months or more.
Are you referring to a conversation you had with a tribal member regarding that?
At the site I run in Santa Rosa. So we got agreement that we could hire a third party consultant. And this was environmental concerns.
Well, would you consider having a representative of the tribe that Ms. Ryan represents present while you're building the new fence?
If if they could say.
Cost you anything.
Well, but if they could commit to a timeline that was worked. I can't agree to something and then they're unavailable. That's what we've had before.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there would be no reason to, we can't require an, an agreement between the applicant and a monitor. But you could, if you have approval to go ahead with the fence, you do it on your schedule. But could you not accommodate a member of the tribe?
Oh, we would, we're accommodating. I just-
Well, that's my question.
I would gladly do that as long as they accommodate us in a schedule.
You, you need to work that out. We can't mandate those kinds of things.
And I just want to add, and this is the hard part with cultural resources.
This is the issue with the cultural resource surveys, is if they're designed for only a surface inspection, there's always gonna be the question of what's under the ground. And so that's where you're relying on Chris and, and the background research to determine that the potential is, is either significant or not significant, something's gonna be found. And so when I look at the projects and I'm, I'm seeing in the Sequo documentation, we're moving to lessen the significance, the first thing I think is there's the potential for something to be there. If there's, if we're having to move to lessen the significance, that's saying there's the, there's a chance. Now, if there wasn't a need to lessen the significance, then to me, there's nothing there. And so I think that's where we have to like, I guess, understand at that stage of contacting consultants, what is their background in the area? And, and so a lot of times I've run into consultants who've never done any work in Lake County. And, but because they're archaeologists, they see everything the same. And so I, I know Jay, I know he's worked here in Lake County for decades. And so there's a certain level of comfort, you know, that I know he knows what he's looking for. But at the same time, when we're staying only on the surface, then the question's always gonna come back, what's in the ground? And so that's the hard part with that early stage of designing, what type of survey is gonna be done to meet the needs of the Sequo application? So, and those are just general comments as a part of this process of where, where I've had concern in the past and still raises those questions in my mind when I see some of the language that there is potential for impact. And so in a situation where if there was gonna be new ground disturbance, I would be saying, yeah, I would request that the tribe and the applicant work together. In this situation where it's, it's in soils that's already been disturbed, I'm leaning towards comfortable with that there's not gonna be a new impact. But without knowing the depth of what they're gonna do with their fence, then it kind of still leaves that question in my mind. Is it gonna hit that threshold when you're in new soil? So that's-
Normally, it's two feet for a six foot fence. That's-
And the existing fence that's there is six feet?
Oh, God knows, it's old and I haven't, I will not say it met, met any criteria. I just don't know.
I have a quick question about the fence, if I can digress a little bit. The current fence has some beautiful roses planted along the edge of it. Do you plan to keep those?
It's kind of by the vineyard, right? When you're driving up to it on the waysa?
So we won't affect any of the fencing that's near the vineyard. All right, that won't be affected at all. And we have to expand our gates and things to meet our needs and probably do two gates instead of one, that kind of thing. But we won't be affecting those roses.
I guess bringing it back to the question of requiring, obviously, we can't force the applicant to a, or my, I guess what I'm trying to say is that if the tribe and the applicant are able to work together, that's obviously an agreement between those two parties. Does that have to be a condition of approval or how would we word that out? Because I understand that this issue is, from experience with, with my job, I have to as well consult with the tribes. And my experience so far here in Lake County has been very fluid. They, they're always available. We give them a heads up like, hey, we're about to commence work a certain date and they make sure to be there. So from what I've experienced, it's not a difficult process. I guess the point of this conversation is to allow the tribe to be present if there's gonna be any ground disturbance that could potentially unearth something. So it's a very simple process. It, it could be a very easy agreement. So that's, obviously, that's between the applicant and, and the tribe to deal with. But I, I believe that it's, that, that it's, that it should be a requirement for that reason of historical artifacts and, and the history of Lake County, knowing that there's, these tribes have been here, you know? So to respect their, their wishes if the, if the tribe sees it as something that they would like to have.
Commissioners? In your assessment of the, of any project in relation to impacts to environmental resources, of which cultural resources and tribal resources are included, what you would be doing is, and as you're aware, is assessing the information in front of you and determining whether or not the impact is mitigated to less than significant, as Commissioner Brown had noted. And in this case, if with the evidence presented today, which includes not just the material provided by staff, but comments and written materials provided by, by the public, if, if in considering all of that together, you have determined that there is evidence that further mitigation is required, is required here in this, in this situation, you can, should your commission choose, require a monitor. You can also, rather than stating a blanket monitor, if the circumstances allow in your assessment, you may also put criteria on, on requiring a monitor. For example, if your concern is disturbed, undisturbed areas below a certain number of feet or certain diameter of hole for fencing, you can put a parameter around that. So you could, you could, as conditions, as part of your conditions, require a monitor if ground disturbance were to occur in certain areas that you would identify in that language. And then certain depth of digging, for example. So you could put criteria on a condition if that, if, but I do ask, if you, if this is the direction, if this is the direction your commission chooses to go, that you do make clear on the record your findings as to why this extra condition is necessary.
May I? Trey Scherel on behalf of Two CW Productions. We would like to request a, to add a condition of approval that compels the applicant to notify, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the tribe off the top of my head, Big Valley, to notify them seven days prior to any ground disturbance and allow a monitor on the property during any ground disturbing activities, including fence construction and renovation. Or that's, the applicant is comfortable with that if, if that would, if that would make everyone comfortable.
I think that's a good suggestion, just opening up the line of communication and just, you know, having somebody onsite would just alleviate that potential, you know? Thank you for that suggestion, Trey.
And I would encourage the applicant not to apply the, her Santa Rosa model necessarily automatically to Lake County.
Catherine Karg. I just wanted to be clear, any, anything associated with the dirt, we're not gonna invite them in if we're installing HVAC units or things to property, only soil items, Craig.
Yes, any ground disturbance, yes, correct. So how would we include that as a condition of approval or would it?
Yep.
So it would be worded, the permutee shall notify the culturally affiliated tribes seven days prior to ground disturbance to invite the tribe to monitor the ground disturbance.
And allow them access to do so.
Thanks, Trey.
Let's specify on that ground disturbance because I think that we've been focusing on previously undisturbed soils. So if it is fine with the commission, I'll go ahead and add that specification in as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for your questions. And if there's anybody else in the Zoom room that would like to speak?
One more hand up, Erin McCarrick. I'm going to unmute you.
Okay, there we go, unmuted. Thank you so much again. This is a new, it's not what I said before. So Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake, also on the Clear Lake Planning Commission. And just as maybe further assurance to the commission and also to Sarah, is that the LCCA is in conversations with tribal officials and tribal leaders to do an AB 52 training for our members. And the applicant is a member of the LCCA. So with the work being done in Clear Lake, very aware of the need for a knowledge base of the consultation process, the monitoring process, and just a deeper understanding of tribal cultural resources in Lake County, where they are, where they're significant, where there might be a high impact situation. I don't know if Sarah's still on the Zoom, but I will certainly reach out to her to ensure that she's part of that conversation and the potential training that we're planning on doing. So the applicant is a member of the LCCA. They will have the opportunity to be part of that training and also continuing the conversation in Lake County.
Thank you, Erin. Any more hands in the Zoom room?
Another hand up, Jennifer Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Jennifer Smith, president of the LCCA. Erin just mentioned exactly what I wanted to let everybody know about. We're actively working with our membership to open the lines of communication and have a better understanding on a regular basis. You know, I think this is a very important project to our community. We lost a processing facility last year due to a multitude of reasons. But it's, it's jobs, it's economic impact. And again, it's, it's one agricultural product replacing the, you know, similar activities of another agricultural product. So to me, there's really no change in circumstances. It's, it's like traffic, it's like activity. And as we do continue to grow in size and scope, it is important that we have these license types that allow vertical integration, that allow the jobs and the processing of product to be handled within the county rather than sharing that revenue streams with other locations. So I hope that you will approve this project. It's desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
If Jennifer's still there, could she please spell out what LCCA stands for?
Lake County Cannabis Alliance.
Thank you. Any more hands in the Zoom room?
There are no more hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, seeing as there are no more hands in the Zoom room, I will bring it back to chambers. If there's any-
Good morning. My name is Jaclyn Dharma-Pollin. I'm a owner of Monte Cristo Vineyards. My family and I have been farming here for about 25 years in the wine grape industry. Recently, we were awarded a 22 acre cannabis permit and we're very pleased with that. It's giving us the ability to diversify our business. Today, I'm here to express my support for a successful business owner, Ned Fussell, and his application for the permit for Adobe Creek. This business has displayed their expertise at the industry as farmers and they have created verticals in the cannabis industry. He is highly respected and recognized throughout the state of California. We in Lake County should feel very honored that Ned and Adobe Creek have chosen Lake County to bring their processing business and truly bring full circle to a business like this in Lake County. I have personally visited his current facility in Santa Rosa and three words come to mind. Professionalism, well managed, world class. I saw a workplace where problem solving, teamwork and leadership resulted in a continuous improvement in innovation in this organization. If I didn't know I was visiting a cannabis facility, I would have thought I was at a Fortune 500 professional office. We truly need this sort of excellence in Lake County. We really do. As a longtime farmer here in the county, I am pleased to see an unused, empty facility come to life with a successful business that will provide a much needed employment for many of our residents. It will support many local farmers such as ourselves for processing. And let's not forget the tax revenue. I urge you to approve this permit as we will all benefit from a proven business and highly respected professionalisms like Ned and Adobe Creek. And we should be honored they have actually chosen Lake County to do this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more question, hands in the Zoom room? I believe there's none. And back to chambers.
Good morning. My name is Alec Dixon. I'm a co-founder of SC Laboratories. We're a cannabis testing analytical lab out of Santa Cruz that's been up serving the cannabis space for the last 13 years. And I wanted to speak in positivity today for the potential approval of this cold storage facility. One thing I just wanted to really highlight from my experience with cannabis is, you know, so many of, so much of the most artisanal aspects of this plant that really kind of helped define quality are these trace aromatic volatile compounds, the terpenes, the other aromatic volatiles that really not only really define the craft artisan quality of cannabis, but also kind of the, you know, the, the entourage effects, the medicinal benefits that, that, that craft cannabis can bring. And these, 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 these attributes, you know, these terpenes and other aromatics, they go away really quickly whenever, whenever, you know, drying or curing happens in hot temperatures. You know, anything over 70 degrees starts to volatilize these very trace perishable attributes. And a lot of farmers in Lake County and Northern California are actually at a major disadvantage due to the fact that there's not any type of cold storage processing facilities like this that can, you know, preserve the artisanship of what's cultivated over a nine month period. And so, so a lot of farmers up here in Lake County and Northern California in general, you know, they'll harvest their plants in 100 degree temperatures, you know, kind of load them up in box trucks that are essentially microwaves zapping all these perishable artisan attributes over a two hour drive before they make it to Santa Rosa or somewhere else in the state. And so in a huge way, it kind of essentially sets all farmers back in a massive competitive disadvantage. You know, for, you know, in the state, whenever, you know, other areas have these types of cold storage facilities. But, you know, in my opinion, kind of, you know, this is a really great opportunity for, for, for Lake County and for Northern California. A space like this that could actually, you know, really preserve these artisan attributes. Kind of, I think in a large way can help, you know, continue to shine light on Northern California, Lake County, you know, the Emerald Triangle being kind of not only the cleanest kind of region to kind of cultivate cannabis on an artisan way, but also help really preserve those attributes for the farmers that are growing here so that they can be able to kind of be, stand out differentiating, differentiating themselves in a, in a market that's saturated with really low quality herb that's not being kind of cared for in such a way. And so I think this just really brings a huge advantage for farmers around this area and Northern California in general. Because very few people are like actually very progressively looking at this topic of how important kind of post harvest temperatures and controls are to really building, you know, to establishing the artisan metrics that, you know, really can, will bring farmers, you know, to the forefront in a, in a hyper competitive space. But anyway, just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. One last little look around. Do we have one person here?
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Dharma-Pollin. I'm co-owner of Monte Cristo Vineyards. You heard from Jaclyn a little while ago. When I look at this project, I really have one primary objective or primary word of support. It's an opportunity to keep high value processing in the county. We have been in the wine business for about 25 years. I should say we've been in the wine grape business for 25 years. I should say we've been in the wine grape business for 25 years. And we actually end up shipping our grapes after all the hard work into other counties for processing. Now, we are starting to process a little bit more in the county, but not nearly enough to support the farming that takes place in grapes in the county. But here's a lovely opportunity to bring a very professional, carefully managed operator into the county to help with the processing of cannabis. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the county, and we shouldn't miss it to keep the value-add, the value chain in the county. It'll support the farmers who are working in the county. It'll support employment in the county. And I think the macroeconomic perspective for us is something that could filter away if we don't grab this opportunity. And to have the right kind of operator is also very important. So we are very supportive of this, and we'd like to encourage the board, the committee to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more hands? We'll be bringing this back to the commission for discussion or action.
Are you officially closing public comment?
Public comment is officially closed.
Chair, if I might add a request for an amendment in the conditions of approval. In the first paragraph, it does list the Adobe Creek Processing Facility and Ms. Clark. But I'd like to add the Two CW Productions, just so that it's very specific. Thanks.
All right. Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah.
I'll let her go.
Thank you. I have another, a few comments that are pretty minor. But first of all, I don't understand why it would be called Adobe Creek when it's actually located on Kelsey Creek. Not sure you want the affiliation with the prior operation that was there for a short while. For most of the time that facility was known as the Kelseyville Packing Company, I think for like 75 years. That's just a comment. I'm a little confused because throughout the documents, there are a number of names associated with this project. The Jed Morris and Matt Prim has been, apparently that was a mistake.
Yes.
We have a Ned Fussell. We have Two CW Productions, Inc. That according to the Secretary of State is owned by Edward Fussell. The COAs are for Adobe Creek Processing Facility and Katherine Clark. Katie Clark gave me a tour, and she was associated with Bertoloni Realty. There's Highmark Land Company LLC that's owned by a John O'Chapinty. There's Titan Valley Building Company, Jed Morris. We already talked about that one. The owner of record appears to be Aztec Property Management in Yuba City. And then the applicant, Adobe Creek LLC, according to the Secretary of State, is owned by Greg Saras out of Nevada. I'm wondering if someone can offer some clarity on that.
You just need to speak into your mic more.
Good morning. John O'Chapinty with Highmark Land Company. I also have Aztec Real Estate and Development. Somehow that's got put in there. But Jed Morris and the other group was a former group and took a run at it and didn't go. Katie and her partners came in and made a run at it, and that's why you're seeing all the names. I was every bit as confused when I first read it. So especially when I saw Jed Morris and the other guys on there. So I, one of my companies on the LLCs is Highmark Land Company. And we have a number of land companies, but most of our development is done through Aztec Real Estate and Development. We're out of Yuba City, California, and we do a lot of the same development up in that area.
Okay, so the applicant is actually Two CW Productions, Inc. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Got it? Any other questions?
I think so. That pretty much explains it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question about the, I'm concerned about the odor. I read about this nasal ranger device that's supposed to detect odors. But as far as I understand, it's an olfactometer, but it actually depends on human judgment to quantify smells. Can the applicant or somebody answer that? Is that correct?
Trey Sheron, behalf of Two CW Productions, excuse me. Yeah, the nasal ranger is useful to, it's the way that like regulatory bodies, when they get a odor complaint, they can use that technology to quantify it, to know if there's been a violation. And therefore, it's also, it's a way to standardize. You know, some people are more sensitive to odors than others. It's a way to more standardize odor monitoring. And as described in the property management plan, it would be security personnel responsible for doing daily monitoring. It also, it can, you know, with wind, it can shift odors around. But it's also intended to help the person using the nasal ranger detect the source of the odor, which building, as opposed, you know, if all the buildings have cannabis in them and you're smelling cannabis at La Salle Road, then it's hard to tell which one the source, is the source of the odor. And so, this equipment is intended to make that easier. And it's based on, I found it from, it's what regulatory air monitoring uses to determine odor, if odors are exceeding a certain threshold.
So the device actually measures particulars or terpenes in the air?
Yes, the organic compounds, terpenes, it can quantify those.
Okay, thank you. I've heard from a lot of people today appreciating that, you know, there's a need for this space to be used to process product. Some of the letters that we've received seem to be just anti-cannabis. And I just want to make a comment about that to the public. It's not our choice as a planning commission to decide whether cannabis is legal or its processing is legal or not. That's not, that's not a decision we're allowed to address, really. And it just reminds me of my great-grandmother in Lake County. Right after prohibition, she was really against vineyards because of the effects of alcohol when misused. So I just, I just wanted to comment that I feel that this is a new time. This is the challenge of our era, if you will. My concerns about this project are, the only one that was not addressed was population. And I do think that the population will be affected because in agriculture, when, we used to bring in 100 people for harvest when I was running my grandfather's pear orchards, and we had to house them. We ran a labor camp. We had to meet a whole lot of state legal criteria. And so, I'm very concerned about where these people are going to live. We are already in a housing crisis. I'm not sure if we can address it at this time, but I want to express that this is a really big concern that we need to, we need to tackle as a community. And that's about it for me. Thanks.
According to the property management plan, there'll be 12 full-time employees as well as 80 employees for the peak season. I agree with you 100% on the housing, but that's a whole nother plate of food. I will take us back since we're telling, story time. Commissioner Chavez and I had the opportunity to go up north to Humboldt County. And one of the things on our field trip for the California Planning Commission Association was to visit cannabis industrial zones. And these were, this is an actual facility that used to be an old sawmill, okay? Think about it, just like the packing sheds that are vacant and sitting there. And they have actually built a new zone, considered cannabis innovation zones. And it is exactly that. It is taking old vacant sawmills and converting them into processing facilities. And when we walked up, it's actually, it was bear extractions. You can look it up. But the need was there, the building was there. And what they have actually done was amazing. It's a little bit more extensive than the project before you today. But the use, it was very clean. They ran it very well. It didn't smell like a skunk or didn't smell like marijuana when you got there. It was very, it was ran really, really well. And to see something like this come to Lake County is long overdue. I feel that the use for this building, just to see it have some life into it and bring it into the community is a great thing. Also, I appreciate Trey showing the way that the trucks would actually come into Luessa. Tomato, tomato, Luessa. That's what I call it. But just to take that into consideration, you know, you're not going to be on Main Street. You're not going to impact anything that way. It's straight off the highway. Talk about a prime location between South County and the northern part of the county. You know, we might even bring people from Ukiah and Mendocino County here that want to utilize the facility. So just like Commissioner Field has said, it's kind of the changing of the time, you know? Back when, when grapes were, or excuse me, pears and walnuts, and this was a flourishing community, and people would actually work at the packing sheds in the summertime and, you know, do all of that. This is just kind of where we're at. And I feel like if we look past this opportunity, that's just another one you can mark off the list that, oh, that could have, should have, would have been. So the fact that we have this in front of us today, I hope that we can come to a consensus and see this through. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to thank everybody that came along for this project to kind of show us what this building could be used for and what it can, what its potential will be for Lake County and for this industry. I believe that it's something important that we need because of the new, all the permits that are being processed and the agriculture of cannabis here in the county. And the fact that we don't have to take it out somewhere else for processing, that takes care of many problems, kind of the ones that were discussed about where are people going to stay? Well, that just provides local jobs, like people live here and they need a job. So it takes care of a lot of things and mainly by giving someone the opportunity to work. And kind of like what we were, the consensus of the commission about it being something that the county needs. It's there, so might as well use it for what it's going to be. So thank you guys for, for the community for showing their support and coming along to kind of highlight this project. So if there's any more comments?
Yeah, I have one more comment. I was reading the letters that were submitted electronically, and I wanted to respond to Pauline Bradley's letter specifically. She said she moved from Covelo about 10 years ago to escape the drugs and gangs associated with the illegal pot farms there. I just want to point out that we don't have any direct control over the legality of cannabis, as I mentioned. But it's possible that regulation or allowing operations to get legal, if you will, might prevent criminal activity. So we're able to regulate. I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear, but that's the way I've been thinking about it.
If there is, if there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion. You guys okay?
Yep.
I move that the planning commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 21-30 for Adobe Creek Processing Facility, Two CW Productions, for the property located at 4280 Luessa Road, Kelseyville, California, APN 008-038-50, will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 21-30 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated February 23, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes?
In regards to major use permit UP 20-32, I move that the planning commission grant that the major use permit UP 21-29 applied for by Adobe Creek Processing Facility, Two CW Productions Incorporated, on property located at 4280 Luessa Road, Kelseyville, California, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report and as amended here today, February 23, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. So, thank you. And if you guys make your way out, do so quietly. We still have business to discuss.
Anytime the chair is ready, I'm happy to give a department update.
Department update?
Yes, thank you. First, I wanted to extend thanks to Assistant Planner Trish Turner and CDD Tech Jamie Henry for jumping in to assist, to fill the very large hole now that Jim has, is gone. So, and to let the commission know that we have already compiled, we had a good response to the position to replace, to get our new gym. And so, we will be scheduling interviews hopefully soon so we can move this process along. But in the meantime, Trish has the experience of doing it before, and Jamie is gracious enough to start learning it. So we're going to have a deeper knowledge base when we do finally get the new gym. So thanks to them. And then, secondly, my evaluation before the board of supervisors is on March 7.
You personally?
My personal eval. So if you've been thinking, we need to give this woman the heave-ho, feel free to reach out to your supervisor prior to that date.
Or, or the complete opposite, right? You know, give credit when credit is due, you know, reach out. Absolutely.
Thank you. This is a, I'm hoping to stick around. You never know. You never know when those things go on the agenda, but.
I second that.
My dad told me when I was little, he says, you know, what you really need to do is find that job that you just love, and you can't believe they're actually paying you to do it. And so, I think I've found that. And I'm really, I'm very, very thankful for the team that I have. And, and I'm just really honored to be part of it. Thanks.
And just, just to echo on what you said, you are one person who always mentions the team. It is, it's never, you know, patting yourself on the back or taking your own personal accolades and accomplishments because you know that it takes a whole team to make anything happen. So you're very selfless in that way. And yeah, I feel like maybe, I've been doing this for like three or four years now and going through all of the different changes and different people. And poor staff has had to meet and greet and then watch somebody leave, meet and greet and watch somebody leave. So the fact that you're rooted here, and here meaning like Lake County, and just the many hats that you wear, we're very fortunate to have you. So I hope that your, what did you call it? Your evaluation?
Yes.
I hope it goes well. Yes.
Anything else that we?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
If I may, commissioners? Just real quick, very little thing. Thank you. Thank you. Very, very quick. You may have heard that the county council has put in her retirement. Her last day is the 24th of March. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that our office will undergo a shakeup. So if, you may. So if, you may see that sort of spillover, attendance of Planning Commission and availability and that sort of thing. So just to give you a heads up that that will happen, potentially.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And we will call this meeting adjourned at 10:50.